Let's do a roll call first.
Present.
Mr. Burris?
Present.
Mr. Pope?
Present.
Lucas?
Here.
Martin?
Present.
Chairman. All right. I'm gonna ask Mr. Bart, who would you come up and say a prayer for us when we get started?
Let's pray. For God our Father in heaven, we thank you so much for this day. We thank you, Father, for all the blessings you've given us, especially the blessings, Father, of your son. We thank you, Father, for blessing this country, and we pray that you be with us as we tend to the affairs of the county here, that we always keep in mind the citizens, and that we do right always by them, and that we work this county to the best of our abilities. Forgive us of our sins, in Jesus' name we pray, and amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we have some guest speakers today. Mr. Harris. Tawon Harris. Tawon, please come up.
Good afternoon. To Chairman Thrift and the Ware County Commission, to City County Manager Mole and City Attorney and the other city officials who are representing here, thank you for this opportunity to address you this afternoon. I also want to thank you for the opportunity to serve as a trustee on the Waycross Ware County Library Board, where I currently serve as Vice Chair of the Local Board, Vice Chair and Treasurer of the Regional Board. I want to thank you for allowing me to serve my community in this capacity, allowing me to set an example for my family members and for youngsters all across this county. I want to thank you for your support and your willingness to come out to our recent meetings to see for yourself what is going on at the Ware County Waycross Library within the Okefenokee Regional Library System. As a board member, I work diligently to make sure that I uphold the code of ethics that I sign, that is aligned with the Georgia Library System as well as with the ALA, the American Library Association, which includes diversity, inclusion, and access to materials, whether I believe in them personally or align with them personally or not. I find it quite comforting and actually empowering that when I go to the library to check out books, I can check out a book from one view, find the book to check out with the opposite view, and also find materials in between to help me grow as I seek to know and make decisions. This is what I would like for all of our citizens in the Ware County Waycross area and beyond, and I thought it'd be fitting, since you took your time to come to the library meeting, for me to come to your meeting and express my gratitude for the opportunity you have given me to serve. On many occasions, as a servant of this community, I have had an occasion to explain myself, to explain why I made, I voted the way I voted, to explain why I made the comments I made, but it hasn't been until recently that I felt the need to defend myself. At the most recent scheduled regional meeting, it seemed to be that there was a little hostility in the area. As those who had signed to speak and address the board made their statements and their feelings known, there were those who did not sign up, who felt just as passionately,
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I would just like to say, appreciate you, Ms. Harris, for coming up and explaining, and like I say, have been somewhat of a contentious issue in the last three or four months. I think Commissioner Lucas, he feels passionate about what he feels about, and I respect that, and he and I have had several conversations about that, and I think hopefully this is kind of getting resolved now, and so I appreciate you coming up and explaining it, and like I say, sometimes you can be caught between that proverbial rock and a hard place, and so I hope that all this can be smoothed out, hope it can move on, so we can move on as a community and move on as a citizen and as a commission. Thank you. Thank you, Tawon. Okay. We got another speaker needs to come up. Thomas Rachel Littlejohn.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I come today with my fellow Pascal Road residents, just trying to seek some clarification on what's going on, on some upgrade to Pascal Road. Smith Road has been paved and finished over Emerson Park, New York Avenue, New Jersey Avenue, Pennsylvania Avenue. Those streets are being paved and upgraded as we speak. The newspaper showed a few weeks ago, Ozzy Lane, Morris Road, RC Davis Road have been paved and worked on and finished in the past month because of standing water after heavy, heavy rain. And I held, pity held Pascal Road dating back to 2013 on a heavy rain, what it looked like. This is Pascal, you can't see it, but it's completely flooded, and that's been since back 2013 it's been going on. And they said it's because of the RC Davis Road and the paving done over there because of standing water following a storm. We've had many storms that a lot of water stays there for weeks at a time before, because there's no drainage. And there's no upgrade on Pascal Road after 10 to 15 years of complaints about flooded road, poor drainage, dangerous blind curbs, and I'll question to the County Commission to date this, why? Why can't we get something done on that road? We have our own opinions, but we leave them at that at this point, but we seeking some answers, because it's not the first time we've been here, Brandon, it's up.
Thank you. I wish we could do that. All of, Mr. Littlejohn, I live five miles down the Griffin Road, and if I'm down there to get about a foot and a half underwater, we'll go four miles down to there. We can't see around them curves either, and that Griffin Road been down there a long time, but we can't pave them all, and we can't, we can't get it all cut back. But I ask, is Michael here today, in here? Michael, would you, see if you could do something about letting those right of ways cut out there?
Is Brandon here also?
Brandon, come up, go on, tell us about something.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
At our last meeting, I think it was a call meeting last week, we talked about Pascal
With pictures about flooded conditions out there and uh and it's. I guess it's kind of sad that, hey, you know, they've been dealing with this situation for a long time out there. And I don't know how long the people of the streets that we just paved, how long they have been dealing with it, but. You know, I would hope this is something that we could do out there, at least try to alleviate the blind curviness out there and uh. Maybe try to provide some kind of drainage, whether it's through the ditches or whatever out there to try to help them in their situation. And uh hopefully paving can be down the road, but uh. You know, these are taxpayers, these are people that's out here and we don't want them to feel like they're just forgotten about. And uh so that's what I hope we as a commission could do, kind of look at it and maybe see if there's something we can do to try to help. At least alleviate some of the problem they're having out there right now. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Burrow. I think we could uh maybe we can do something about that brush though, I don't know if we can uh. Really pave the road right now.
The two, the two things you've got that impacts this to what Brandon was speaking of is. You've got a thirty foot prescriptive easement and that pres- prescriptive easement, we do not own it. It has never been deeded to the county. And so you've got that and besides, it's only thirty feet and from what he was saying is, we had surveyed. And uh the right of way line was in the ditch. So when you think on the backside of that ditch, even though the public works has it a pass cut back past that, that's on private property. And so um that would have to get cleared up, either that or at least. Get enough right of way to be able to take that blind curve out, if you don't square that corner up. That would be the only way.
So let me ask this, on, on the uh, on the black, blind curve. And you're talking about the prescriptive easement we have right now, and if we go ahead and further, then we'll have to purchase right of way.
Yes, sir.
Have we approached the property owner about, purchased a little bit of that right of way to try to?
We haven't, um, we can, we did have a survey, but we can move forward and see what we can get, I don't know if public works. Or Brandon's might have talked to that property owner or not, but that, that is a possibility, if we don't square that corner up.
Or maybe the property owner may see what the situation is and maybe. Would be kind-hearted enough to say, hey, you know, maybe I can try to work with you all and.
Yes, sir.
You know, in lieu of maybe some other kind of exchange or something, you know, but. I guess I'm just trying to see a solution to it right now and I know it is, it's a blind spot in there and if you come around there, you got to be very cautious.
Yes, sir.
Can we let Brandon, point Brandon to take care of this situation, let him get with the landowners and come back at us and tell us. See if we can buy it or do it or do something to trade with them and try to correct that curve or something, straighten it out. We let him be the one to go look, see if he can come up with something.
Yes, sir.
Let's do that, y'all agreeable with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Burrow.
Thanks, sir.
Michael Hargrove. Will you come up?
Good afternoon, gentlemen.
Good afternoon.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm the chairman of the city. This is regarding the uh hoopla that's been at the library over the past few months. And I just want to share a couple of thoughts with you guys. Firstly, I don't see where there's any religious overreach going on in our library in the form of censorship. There's no censorship or free speech being promoted by any so-called kind of Bible thumper or any other group. It's, it's all very diverse. What is going on is propaganda of the normalization of fringe lifestyles. Kids, like some adults here, lack critical thinking skills that help them determine what's good and what's bad in life. But under the false flag of diversity. The library staff and management has been favoring certain views according to what I see. And they're trying to steer the thinking of minors. In doing so, it's, it's putting the library in conflict with its own mission statement. This favoritism being shown does not enhance any educational experience. It doesn't serve our community at large, in fact. This favoritism has driven taxpayers away from our library. Our library, remember, is taxpayer-funded, including the function of the county. And it is a public venue. You guys support, help support this place with our tax dollars. So somebody needs to be reminded in relatively strong terms. That this library serves primarily a fairly conservative cross-section of citizens. So do you want our library to let any fringe persons in this? Under a false flag of diversity? I don't. There are plenty of private venues in the county where it can act diverse. They can do it there, they can do it on their own dime too, not yours, not mine. Thank you. Questions?
Thank you.
Is that all the guest speakers?
Yes, sir, that's all we've had to sign up.
Let's go to the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'd be remiss if I didn't. Mr. Hargrove, I appreciate you coming, but. You made a statement about the library and about how they serve a most of what, what was that about a conservative or?
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
What was that, the statement you made about the library serves a conservative base or something alluded to something of that nature?
Well, the statement I made was that uh serves a fairly conservative cross-section of citizens here in our county.
True. And you say that a lot of people are not using the library right now?
I understand from a couple of people that because of some of the agendas that seem to be in place there. That they uh felt uncomfortable taking children into the library. Uh, that disturbs me, it should be open to all.
Well, I mean that.
Certain agendas should be pushed at a library.
I.e. what, when you say a certain agenda shouldn't be pushed?
I'm sorry?
When you say a certain agenda shouldn't be pushed, could you elaborate on that just a little bit more?
Well, I see a promotion of homosexual lifestyles being on exhibit at the library in display cases. And I see it being focused on a thirteen and up group. So based on my common values and based on other people I've talked to. I don't see, I don't see that being appropriate for that age group.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna leave that alone for right now.
I mean, I've got a book here on the display case, if you want me to read some of it, I can't.
Well, I've, I've seen the display case up there, you know, what it's the library is for everyone and, you know, they have a lot of different, you know. Figurines and different things and uh, you know, the library haven't always been for everyone. But thank God it is for everyone now.
Gee, I didn't know that.
Yeah, the library haven't always been for everyone, public libraries.
Well, it's a public library.
Right. That's all.
For the all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any more?
Library?
You go ahead, Tim.
No, library.
Okay, today. Resolution. Resolution twenty twenty-three seventeen, accept Georgia DOT contract for airport terminal apron rehabilitation.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Commissioner, we have Jeffrey Greppes with uh Georgia DOT with us. About that contract, if you have any questions about it.
Okay. Will he come up and explain to us on that?
Good afternoon. Uh, it's, I apologize for my voice, allergies are driving me, plus I got a weak voice anyway. We have worked on a contract to rehabilitate the terminal apron. And if, if you're familiar with the way the apron is laid out for the terminal building, you've got a ramp that comes from the primary runway that. Comes in about in the middle of the terminal apron. Looking at the, the dollars required to do the project. It was designed for one project and we went back and looked at doing it as, as a phase one and a phase two. When it was bid, um, feel like we got, for, for the times we live in, let's put it that way. Pretty good bids in Scruggs Construction Company, local company was the, the low bidder. Your base bid is phase one and that is from the center line of that ramp to the south. That's where you've got the majority of the large jet traffic. You've got a problem with the, the structure and the age of that apron that when these, these. Jets come in and park, if you're heavier than your piston-driven aircraft, especially in the summertime, when the asphalt gets hot. Tends to loosen up a little bit, you'll get these little ball-shaped depressions where the wheels are sitting. And it takes the pilots a little bit of extra effort, additional fuel, just to be able to get the aircraft moving to get out of those ruts. What we've got proposed to do with your, with your engineers' design will give hard ones, you'll have concrete areas that are set up. And that's where those jets will be parking and you won't have any chance for any, any depressions. The total project.
There won't be no milling on it?
Oh, there'll be, there'll be milling and overlaying those sections.
It will be.
Um, but the, the phase one will be almost a full-depth. Reclamation and re- rehabilitation to, to correct the strength efficiencies. The other half is basically just going to be a, a milling and overlay of the existing asphalt. First phase, the, the, the bid was seven hundred and fifty-five thousand, two hundred and forty dollars, nineteen cents. And then the, the overlay, the bid alternate was uh four twenty, or four forty-two, nine thirty-one. And when you go in and, and account for. Engineering fees. That will come in, that's going to be about another hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. The uh total for the project would be one point three. Little less than one point three five million dollars. The state's prepared to offer seventy-five percent, twenty-five percent. When we did the fencing project, we, we, all your available federal funds were, were taken up on that. And this was just an opportunity, we. As the course of the year goes through, we have other projects that do not make. And that, those state funds accumulate, so towards the end of the year, we start looking for larger projects.
Yeah.
That we can get under contract using state and local money. The way the state, uh, state and local projects are funded, it's seventy-five, twenty-five. So the, the. Federal government is, or to me, the state's going to be putting a little over a million dollars in. And then uh we're taking the local match of three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to go along with that. And that will accomplish both phase one and phase two, give you an airport really be proud of and, and. The folks visiting your community using that airport will, will really appreciate the effort that you've done, the work that you've done. As you know, I don't need to preach to y'all about that, that's, that's an economic engine for this community, it generates tremendous amount of revenue.
I got one question for you, if we done phase one now. Say two years now, two and a half years, you think there might be a chance we might get some Fed money to do phase two?
You get a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in, it's called non-primary intent. For being in the aviation program identified in the national plan of integrated air, air service. You qualify for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. There is bipartisan infrastructure funding that's also available, that's something that I wouldn't really count on for more than a couple of years because. You know the way federal government does with some of the programs, they hand a little money out there and. First time things get tight with them, they'll pull that money back.
So if we do phase one now, next year, we should be getting a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the federal or airport?
You'll, you'll get, you'll have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars available next year, federal.
So why couldn't we do phase two then? And stay that hundred and fifty thousand dollars the federal will give us?
That, that's a hundred and fifty thousand on a four hundred and forty-two thousand dollar project. And you don't know you're not going to get that bid, it would have to be rebid when you decide it, it may be five, six hundred thousand dollars by then.
Might be that cheaper to you, huh?
I have a good feeling, but I haven't, I've never seen prices go down for anything, so I always do love. I spent thirty-something years with you guys and the price of asphalt didn't go twenty dollars a ton whether way or another. And rarely did you ever see it over a hundred dollars and you're seeing a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty dollars a ton for asphalt today, so. I would love to think it deflated back down to normal.
Scott, do we have any plans next year to spend the federal money on for the airport?
Uh, not at this point, we don't. Uh, and that's one of the questions I was going to ask, you're going to get a hundred and fifty from the feds and. Would we get the difference from the state? We don't really know that either, do we?
If they rebid it out.
We, we, we would be able to pull that money and, and. State's fiscal year ends June thirtieth and begins July first. So when this came up, we were looking at trying to get it in at the end of this year. Y'all won't notice any difference because that, that makes my day. What we're looking at is trying to get this project ready to go, get your approval and be able to push a contract out July first. Scruggs has indicated they would prefer to not start working on it until September, October, that this would fit a good timeline. If you, if you elect to just go with the base bid, that's your choice. I, I don't know your financial situation, I don't know what your priorities are, I'm just trying to present the information that the state has.
If you did phase one now, like Commissioner Barnard was talking about. Would the state money be available next time for phase two?
Yes, sir.
Same amount, I mean, say half of what?
Whatever bids it out.
Whatever bids out there. And you're going to have a hundred and fifty thousand in federal funds. We, we would not have any problem making that delta, but again, it's going to be seventy-five percent money and twenty-five percent money where. Your federal funds, you pay ninety percent, the state pays five or a little bit, sure. Just a, a, a difference in present value and future value.
Does this, phase one, does that take care of, um, because I understand that there's more corporate flights coming in? Would this take care of the wheels sinking in the pavement?
This will take care of the issues you've got with any weights of, of the jets coming in, yes, sir. The rest of it would be for your, your general aviation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Where would our twenty-five percent come?
Um, I would suggest and recommend we use the art of funds, like I said, we have to have that spent by the end of next year. We have to. Yes, sir.
We can use it on this.
Yes, sir, you can, yeah.
And we've been, we've been kind of going that off a bucket for a, a lot here, have, lately, haven't we?
We have primarily just for capital items. Uh, of, you know, large ticket projects that, you know, you pay for.
Right.
The last time that I had to check just recently, you know, the county received six point nine million and um. Last time I checked, which has been a few weeks ago, there was right at five million left.
Okay.
If it's just possi, I mean, you can use that, you don't ne- necessarily have to, we can use floss dollars to do that with, but um. That's, that's why I'm suggesting is just use the urban money.
But don't we have a airport fund, I'm talking about, this money's been accumulating over the years and years and years?
I don't know what the balance is, but I can find that, find that out for you pretty quick, I don't think Barry Lee's in here, she may be, but I can text her and find out. I think we use some of that on the fence, I'm not sure, the perimeter fence, but I can find out.
Yeah, and we uh, I think that was what, like about eighty, eight or five, eight or six thousand, something like that.
So where are they going to start on the fence?
Uh, that I don't know, you know staying runoff hand, when the fence project is supposed to start?
Uh, we are just getting all contractual things in place, certificates of insurance. Then it will just be when the contractor wants, uh, wants to start, so I would say we would probably be seeing something in the next. Month and a half to two months of contract starting on that.
So if I'm understanding Steve correctly, what he's saying is that with the Fed, the federal money that we will get once a year, a hundred and fifty. If we waited till next year when we got to a hundred and fifty and then we, the state will still have this four forty-two?
Yes, sir.
But we don't know what the bid will come in at that time.
You'd have to dig it back out. I get, just got to take, so there's a little over four hundred thousand in the airport fund.
So what do we spend that money on?
What?
What do we spend that money on?
Capital items, you know, any sort of uh capital improvements of the airport.
And how soon is this, will we have to vote on this right here, is this something?
Uh, I think it's fairly recent, they'll need to make a decision fairly soon, right, on the contract?
They provided an authorized resolution for you, if they can approve that. Either for the base one and alternate phase one and phase two, we can have a contract ready. For Commissioner Terry to design for part of July and get it around.
I think they'll only know if they have some time to think about this, how much time they might have to decide which option they want to go with, is that right?
Exactly.
That's up to y'all.
Well, what I'm saying, is there, they align on this, the grant money is in the, uh, this right here? As far as what the state, I mean, do we have a timeline on that?
Well, you've got, you've got a clock ticking on your bench from, from your contractor, he needs to know something pretty soon on what he's going to calculate.
Ninety days.
Or we lose these. Or we lose these, we lose this bid if we don't have something?
Right. So uh. Mr. Chairman, this, we can think of a table until we could get some more clarity as far as whether we want to go with phase one. And phase two or just phase one and then where the money is going to come from and.
How much time did you say we, we needed before it actually needed to happen for the time would run out?
How much time do they have to pre, before the time, before the ninety days would be up?
It, it'll be up next month.
Next month?
We, we would probably make a decision uh. Second week of July or the first part of the third week where we could let the contractor know. He doesn't necessarily have to have contract in the hand, but he needs to know whether we're moving forward with phase, with base bid or with both. So you do have a little bit of that.
Good enough?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking about.
So we, we want to table it then till next meeting?
You can.
That what?
We'll have one uh at the end of this month.
At the end of the month, we have, we have a call.
Yes, sir.
How long is the bid good for from the contractor?
Ninety days.
Ninety days.
Ninety days.
Ninety? And if we delay until next meeting, that will be within the ninety will be good? Thank you.
I got a suggestion, what I would do phase one. And we'll take the hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars out of our committee and do phase two. Take the local match of a hundred and ten out of the airport fund.
You could.
We got four hundred thousand dollars of airport fund.
Yes, sir. You can split that.
Go ahead and do it, phase one and two.
Think that would work.
What y'all think?
I can deal with that.
You want to deal with that?
I like that idea.
All right, Commissioner Barnard, he never ceases to amaze me.
Good for him.
I just like all that money and hellamaze you.
I just like to get stuff done.
Yeah, well, that, like I said, that's.
Okay, let's do that as phase one and two. We'll carry it over. All right, let's go to the B. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash eighteen. Award bid for airport terminal apron rehabilitation, phase one and two.
That's what we just did.
This is the same project, this is the actual bid award, if you want to split that way of award. Note phase one and phase two.
So we just need to put this on the agenda then?
Yes, sir.
Carry it over to the. Carry it over to the meeting.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let's just carry it over to, all right, now, C. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash nineteen, award bid for the Bigley Community Tennis, tennis court rehabilitation. Okay.
We received one bid from Southeastern Tennis Courts in the amount of thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars. And um. We only received one and Brandon checked the references uh for this company and they have received um. High marks from everyone that, that Brandon called.
Okay. So what all they be doing? You tell us about it. What all they be doing?
Yes, sir, the, the specs call for him to um. Complete all of the underlying surface cracking repaired and to resurface those tennis courts. And uh, like Scott said, I called around with the references they had, they've done a lot of work for Brandy County. I don't know if y'all fit over there, the high school lady, they redid all of their high school courts and it turned out really, really well. And then up in East Point, Georgia, they've done a lot of work for them and everybody had very uh glowing recommendations for them and. And the work that they did, so I was glad to hear that.
Now, when they redo these courts, are they going to be painted for pickleball? Or just give straight tennis?
Yes, yes, sir, I, I'm not really up to par on the pickleball department. The, the gentleman at East Point let me know that that is a huge thing for them up there.
Well, it is here too now, there's more players people play at that, they're all tennis.
If it's not already big down here, he said it will be, be very big in the very near future. And uh, there's happened a lot of participation in that. There are some regulations, I just found out about today, that like I said, I had no idea about with how the net. You will, if you get some really advanced players that are technical and all that, I mean, the, the tennis court net is higher than. The pickleball net, he said that's the only thing they had any complaints about when they did exactly what we're talking about, where you just. Stripe the court to allow for the pickleball and use the net for tennis and pickleball, you, you might have some complaints for them. But um, that's, that's what they're do- doing and then he said they also had set it up where. If you had uh several pickleball courts, you could put, if you had enough hard surface area and then put the nets up. And you stri- striped it separately and the way he explained it was like if you had one tennis court, you could set the pickleball court up. Perpendicular to that on both ends and get two pickleball courts where one tennis court was. And then you, you, your pickleball court nets will be lower than what they use for tennis. And another way, I think Scott said, he said, I heard about people doing it, it's just like take some of the tension out and let the tennis court net sag down some to allow. To better meet those requirements for pickleball.
Okay. And your community satisfied with that?
I haven't.
Right after we have talked to them.
To follow on with Commissioner Barnard here, where is this money coming from, recreation budget?
Uh, we can pull it out of recreation, but I would, in this case, I would probably put it out of, out of floss, out of fourteen floss.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
Brandon. It wasn't budgeted, um, from that standpoint, it was something that.
Yeah, this is kind of, all of a sudden they wanted it because they voted for the sales tax, we haven't collected that sales tax.
Have we got money in the fourteen floss to take care of it?
Yes, sir, we'll just take it out there, yes, sir.
Another thing on the tennis court doing is, Brandon, did y'all get a price on the walking track?
Uh, we met with the contractor out there last week and he said it was going to take us a little while to get number two together. So we're expecting you or something like coming to the walking track in the next couple of days.
Couldn't the county road department did lots of the dirt work on that, maybe just get them to come in and do the asphalt?
Michael, go back there. I'll let Michael answer on that part of what they heard from the contractor was, it was not in terrible shape on the grates, it wasn't, it took a whole lot of grade they didn't think to get it where they.
I said, could your department do lots of their grading and hot dirt, you know, getting the site ready to go for the walking track?
Yes, sir.
Back to the chairman to go out and run a bulldozer. Back to Chairman to go out and run a bulldozer for you?
Yeah.
I mean, we, we graded off. I mean, the only thing we done when we went out to clear it, we just cleared it because that's what we were told to do. We hadn't, we hadn't graded off.
I'd say for to give any money, wouldn't it?
It's supposed to be equipped it out like that with a grading number, base number and a paving number?
Okay.
If we wanted to try to do some more grading, I think they would be original for that.
Okay.
Can the county do the grading in and just, just, let's just bid off the asphalt? Okay. All right. Thank you, Mike. We'll carry that one over. It's a resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty, approved regional T-splash project list. We got a list.
This is from the call meeting we had, and that was the list that was created from, uh, from the staff that was directed to pull this together. There's something that's included in the packet there.
This is our T-splash. If it is, uh, voted in again, we'll be on the list.
Yes, sir.
Regional.
If the regional votes it in again, then we have a chance to get all these roads paved that we got on the list.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We did, uh, and you might have noticed, we did, um, um, we, we were shown that we were supposed to allocate our budget for twenty-five million.
Right.
And, um, we created a budget of right at twenty-eight million just from that fact of showing that we needed. So hopefully they might be generous when they go to put the project list together.
Right. Okay. Yeah, we have a budget there of twenty-seven nine sixty, so, but we had twenty-five million that they told us we could possibly get.
Yes, sir.
And they won't start collecting that until?
Uh, the collections probably won't start until the, the current one runs out. They're not really sure when that will be because the proceeds are exceeding expectations. So they could, they're, they're estimating sometime in twenty twenty-six that it will end, somewhere around middle to late twenty twenty-six.
Right.
And so this one would start collection the very next month.
Okay.
I'll emphasize also, if it does pass, the tax, sales tax still will remain what it is now, eight percent.
That's correct.
I mean, we're not going to jump back into nine percent. It's still going to stay at eight percent. One item expires, the other one will take its place.
Right.
And I think something else that needs to be mentioned too is on, I believe if I'm, I'm correct on this, on that T-splash, the regional, even if we were to vote against getting it, and what is it, ten counties?
Eighteen.
Eighteen, but I'm saying, would take what, ten, it would take ten to vote it in, right?
No, sir. It, all eighteen will vote and, uh, if, uh, there's more yeses than no's, then it will, will go through.
Right, so what?
The last, the last time you had four counties include Ware County to vote no, or have more no's than yes. Right, but if it's, uh, overall, the majority of, uh, yeses, then it will pass.
So it's one of the situations where we really don't have a lot of control on it other, other than if we voted here, but if we, I voted, uh, majority of the counties. So, and the tax is already in effect right now, so it won't be a new tax added on. It'll just be a continuation.
Continuation, yes. And it's for a ten-year pro, uh, term.
Right.
Just hard for us to get another local tax because we already got that one on.
Yes, sir.
Since we're giving them a list of projects, if Ware County votes against the new T-splash, but it passes in the eighteen counties, we still are part of that tax.
That's correct.
Right.
Yes, sir.
So we can vote against it, but we'll still be charged that one.
Right.
If it's.
That's what happened last time.
If it passes overall in eighteen counties.
Got in it no matter what.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else on that? Not a good e. Twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one, approved Unison Behavioral Health Contract.
Yes, sir. This is an annual contract we have with Unison Behavioral Health. Uh, it's the same amount as we did this past year, uh, fifty thousand, twenty-six dollars. And, um, it's for providing, uh, mental health care, substance abuse and developmental disability services. There's a total of, um, I believe it's eight counties that's involved in this. Ware County being one of them.
Fifty thousand dollars is our.
Is our share.
Share of it.
Yes, sir.
Is that what we've been given?
Yes, sir. Same, same amount.
Same amount.
Mr. Chairman, and Scott, if we didn't give them this, I guess, supplemental award there, what, 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 we would have to incur some additional costs on the counties' end as far as the mental health part of it?
Yes, sir. Um, I mean, it, it's actually to help participate in all their type of calls, personnel calls, operational calls, uh, travel, you know, going from, um, county to county and so forth.
Right.
These other counties, uh, participate too, they give their.
Yes, sir.
I think it's just a good thing, you know, I mean, really benefits us a lot.
Any more on that? Okay, we'll carry it over. Yep. Ordinance of twenty twenty-three dash oh-three, I mean, chapter six, alcoholic beverages license requirement. James here, he come up and explain that to us, how that works right there.
Lieutenant Chairman, permission? Uh, this is a request from our office to add section six point two title of furnishing to purchase of or possession by person under twenty-one years of age of alcohol beverages. We had a, um, oversight on ordinance. It only allowed for, um, us to charge deputies or whatever to charge the licensee for a person under the age of twenty-one, selling to a person for their age of twenty-one. And what we've done is we've, we've taken out, um, basically the state law and we're adding this section six point two in the county ordinance. Um, with a few amendments and that, those amendments are just, um, we took out the, um, immunity section because it's covered in state law. You know, if I'm under twenty-one and somebody's got a medical condition and I call nine one and I can't be charged for underage drinking. Uh, we took out that section because it's covered in the state law. I did send this to our county attorneys. Um, they drafted this ordinance for their approval to, uh, to put in our, our ordinance. And, uh, with this amendment, then we can charge for selling or furnishing to minors in charging in county ordinance magistrate instead of having it in the state, state court where you.
Instead of the person that holds the license, you can charge the clerk.
First consult.
Before you get charged the clerk, right?
Right.
Does a clerk has to be, I guess they have to be twenty-one to work in a store or whatever.
No, you don't.
Eighteen. They don't have to be twenty-one, so they can't sell alcohol.
Yeah, they can.
Eighteen can sell.
You can sell.
They can sell.
If long as you're eighteen, you just can't buy it.
You can sell it, but you can't buy it.
That's the law.
That's kind of way shy, where you share a shine, but you couldn't.
Do that.
It's just like, you're working in a bar. Um, you can serve out on a bar for an, an age of one, just can't give a bounce. Just have a laws right.
But now she sells it, a underage person sells it, and she'd be responsible.
She'll be charged.
Let's just clean up our ordinance, is what we're doing.
I like that.
Thank you, James. Anything, anything y'all want to ask him?
I like it. I like the way it's worded. I like, I like.
I think it's fine. All right.
Thank you.
I'm just going to stay the next two of my.
Yeah, you got next one. Okay, we'll carry that one over, all right. Okay, the next one's alcohol license application for nineteen eighty-four South Georgia Parkway. Tell us about that one too.
Uh, this, this location is, uh, the old salvage stock is sold, is being shut down for a while. Um, now they're operating or getting ready to operate again, and they're just getting a new license, or they do own his name.
That's right there across from the collar game.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Is that six hundred foot from the property line to school?
It all has to be three hundred.
Huh?
Has to be three hundred from the building to the property line.
All they're going to do is beer and wine.
It's, it's that the door.
Three hundred, beer and wine, but if they were serving, I mean, selling like liquor, something like that, I think it, the fee goes up to six hundred and nine hundred.
Six hundred.
Yeah.
And you'll see some changes in that law for too long because now.
One's going to get you just as drunk as the other.
That's right.
Well, and then the sporting events, now a lot of the D-one schools, you can purchase alcohol at the event.
Right.
So, yeah.
Okay. Any more on that? All right, let's carry it over. Okay, eight alcohol license applications for twenty-four seventy-six Minnesota Avenue, that's our, uh, soccer game store.
This sold and, uh, basically the new owner is, is, uh, applying for a alcohol license for that store.
Okay. Any? Anything on that? All right. Carry that one. All right, let's get it working. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, appointment for Ware County Board of Elections, those three. We have, uh, a Democratic Party nomination letter and we have a Republican. Y'all got any questions on this before we carry it over? Anything y'all want to know?
I'm ready to carry it over.
Ready. We don't. Anybody got anything?
How are we going to go about choosing the names?
Changing?
How are we going to go about choosing the names?
Think about it.
We got Democratic Party and a Republican Party nominated.
What we got?
We got what, seven or eight people?
Yeah, you got, you got four Democrats, ain't you? Three, no.
You got six.
Six Democrats. That's one, two, three, four.
Ah.
Yeah, we have one more. Okay, we got one Republican side.
Three.
Three? All right. How are we going to do that?
Well.
We got to make up.
We can get them up here to speak about it.
Well, all I would like to say at this point right here, Mr. Chairman, is that, you know, we know this is a result of House Bill four twenty-two, we know the whole history about it and, so at this time, uh, Mr. Barnard, he's been appointed chairperson and that post has become open that he's on. So as I stated, you know, in our meeting previously, that I think that, you know, in all fairness, that, you know, we should try to balance this thing out, you know, with the, uh, Democrat and Republican party. That's the two most viable parties we have in Ware County right now. And I think that, uh, my, my desire at the beginning was to lead the board intact like it was because they were working well together and, you know, uh, everybody knew the jobs and everything, so that didn't pan out and, uh, I had one of the members that was on there that, uh, didn't get voted back in. So at this point in time, we got to pick someone else for that seat. And, uh, from the Democratic side, we got, what did it say? It said six names now because two of them just come in here, uh, this afternoon sometime, I guess it was. And, uh, with that being said, we have, uh, seem like, I won't say consens, but just in talking, uh, Ms. Marion Solomon Gaines, who was a previous city commissioner, uh, you know, I think she's been working with the election board and, uh, that seemed to be right now the feeling as far as my take on it is Ms. Gaines is being a person that could fill that spot in. And you also have Mr. Guy Harris, Ms. Sean Taylor, Ms. Carlos White. I understand Ms. Harris, he really doesn't have time to serve on there. And so, uh, at this point in time, this is what seemed like the, uh, feeling, my feelings, uh, my take on it, that Ms. Marion Solomon Gaines, you know, would be a good fit on that board and, you know, and I appreciate the commission seeing fit to try to balance this board off so we have Democrat and Republican representation and it won't be heavy one way or the other. So that's my take on it right now.
I understand this thing, right, and I may have to get Carlos to come up, but there's no political part that nobody plays to this other than they just work the whole, work for me. It's nothing to do with the parties or anything. Am I correct on that or?
Carlos, you'll come up and explain.
Would, would you come up?
Tax commissioner had pushed something to me.
Carlos, explain the job title of being on the Board of Elections, their responsibilities.
Okay, well, um, the boards appointed to make sure that we run a fair, honest, transparent, open, you know, election. So they will make decisions on the times that we open for early voting, whether we can do extra Sunday, things like that. And, um, and to make sure that when we certify the elections, that we've done all the canvassing we've done, make sure that the numbers are accurate. You know, make sure we got two thousand people that's on, on the list, that's in the system that's voted, we got two thousand votes, you know. And so, so the board has done a good job. And also we have board members that, uh, that, uh, you know, their, their job is to come in on election day to be, to be accessible. And we, and we've had a great board where, say for example, someone in the precinct called and say, hey, we out of something. You know, um, and, and Mr. Barnard can speak Ole Missman. You know, we've had board members that say, oh, you know, where is it? I went out to Vicki. You know, that kind of thing and take it. They keep staffing doing it. You know, it's not, it's not like we got four or five people in the office. Basically, it's just me and Ms. Lori and a part-time person on election day. So the board comes in and they assist us. They help us wherever we can. You know, if there's any issues out in the precincts, you know, um, they go out there and check on them because if there's two or three different issues or somebody calling or whatever, and I'm at one, I can't tell a person to wait hours for me to shoot across town. So we've had situations where board members have gone up to the precincts, you know, to find out what's going on, to, to resolve issues. So we want our board to be a, be a working board, especially on election day, because, um, you know, things happen. And so people don't have time to wait around for an hour or two hours, you know, for an issue to be resolved. You know, the board members, uh, as part of their training, you know, they, they learn, they learn the system, they learn the procedures. And, um, and they learn the laws, you know, and, and mainly to be nonpartisan when you come in and try to help, help citizens out, whether. We always say we don't care who you vote for, just come in and vote.
Right.
Let's get the numbers up, you know. I laugh and I tell the board this all the time. I'm a competitive person. When I look at other counties and their numbers are high and novel, I'm like, man, we need to get our numbers up. I don't care, um, you know, I don't, I don't care who you vote for, just, I want to see more people voting. In Ware County. I think we have a better, um, government, better community.
Long as they're legal. Long as they're legal.
Long, of course, of course. You know, and that's one of the things the board is going to make sure because when this time, you know, before they certify, we go through the numbers and we look at how many people that's in the voting registration of this versus how many applications we got, you know, if, if there's two hundred and fifty people out of Maine have voted, they're going to look and make sure there's no more than two hundred and fifty votes.
Okay.
You know, so things like that, that's what the board is there to do, to certify the elections.
I've got a question. Does your bylaws address board members once they're appointed and certified, whatever you have to do? Does it address those board members becoming involved in partisan politics? Should those board members, we, we recognize that the, the Republican Party has the majority now? Should those board members, and I'm not naming anybody individual, but should they get out in the community and be part of partisan politics once they're on that, on that board? That's my question.
Well, the bylaws, um, don't specifically cover it, but it's covered in the code. And I, I can't recite the code for you exactly.
And I, I can't recite the code for you exactly, but there, there are certain levels you can do, because we, we all understand, um, and, and I would invite the attorney to interject in a minute now, if I'm on base, we all understand, we all partisan to a degree.
Right.
Whether we put a yard sign or whatever.
Personal men and all that, but.
Yeah, but, but board members, staff, we shouldn't be actively, um, supporting one candidate over another. Um, mainly because if, if there's ever a challenge, you know,
Right.
whether they're qualified to run, or a challenge on, on the voting status, whatever, you know, we don't want to compromise integrity of, of the board if a member is actively supporting Jared Pope over, you know, the little earth, you know, even though, even though, hey, that might be your buddy, or whatever like that, but we, we still should be able to come together and put the community and put the, uh, the process and the system ahead of any personal, you know, uh, political beliefs.
I think the board member's right doing that, that possibly voters, citizens lose confidence. They, they, they've seen, we see it every day on television nationwide. I mean, I would, I personally would like to see just the cool, calm, collected, common sense board members that get the job done like you've always done.
I, I appreciate that, and I think the board has really worked hard on trying to, trying to do that.
I've got full confidence that Danny will run the board like that.
Right.
But Danny, I'm, I'm not saying because Mr. Bartlett is here.
No, that's.
But he's been, but he's been a tremendous board member, and I think he's gonna be a great chairman.
Right.
Because like I say, he took the initiative to, to go to training, to, to learn about the systems that we work every night, and we talk about it, because if something happens to me on election night, you know, you know, we still got to process the numbers. And so, you know, and talking to Danny, this was a little over a year ago, I mean, we worked up a, on a little personal checklist that's good for Ware County, so that way, even if it's not him, somebody, whoever can look at that list and they say, okay, put the card in, okay, you do this, hit this button, you do that, and, um, it's funny, because when, when we started doing that, you know, Danny came in and we, you know, we, uh, and we did, we did a demo on it, and he would say, well, why don't you add this thing here, because it's explaining a little bit better, so we were adding another little line, and to the point where we almost dumbed it down, to be true, that where, um, because we're a small community, we don't have technicians running around, we can just call people and say, hey, you know, uh, you know, call us to sick with the flu tonight, what are we gonna do? You know, we got to continue, so I have all the confidence in the world that, that, uh, through Danny and the other board members, that if we have, have issues like that, I think we're gonna, I, I don't think we're gonna miss a beat, we may not be as early as we got to be, you know.
Right.
But we're gonna make sure we have accurate numbers, and that's, that's important, accurate numbers are important statewide and, and especially in Ware County.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Those are my comments.
Okay. And this for the attorney, because I want to make sure we're clear on this. Based on House Bill four twenty-two, we understand that, you know, the ruling is that, you know, Democrat and Republican Party consider private parties, so you can't, they can't be the one, you know, I mean, the recommend, they can make recommendations, but they, the board setup is different. So with that being said, when someone submits a list of whatever, the, the, I believe the law also said that you don't have, we don't have to accept those, so a private citizen could send a letter up here, right?
That's correct.
Saying, hey, I, you know, I think, you know, I wish you all would consider these people for, and, uh, then the state Democratic Party, if you don't have a local party, which in the case of Ware County, we don't have a local Democratic Party, so the state Democratic Party, they can send out the name, but at the end of the day, it's left up to this commission to pick from that list of people, and one doesn't carry, I guess, any more weight over the others. Am I correct in that?
That's correct, well said.
Okay, and, uh, so with that being said, you know, we did get a, a letter, uh, from, uh, Ms. Ludin Whitfield, you know, about the four, and she's entitled, that's just like any other system, and then we also got a, a couple of names from the state Democratic Party, which we didn't get those until sometime today, now it's like, I think it's on my iPad that night, I got the list when I got up here. But, uh, as I said, you know, I think it's, it'd be great if we could just move on, hey, it's not too top-heavy one way or the other. I think Danny, you know, I don't know him that well, but I know him since I've been up here on the county commission and been to a few election boards, and, you know, I think the main thing is to have a board member that can work with everyone in there. And I'm saying that any of these other people can't do it, but what I'm saying, at the end of the day, that's what we want, because we want everything to move along smoothly. And I think, uh, Mr. Nelson, he's been elected to pretend to what, a couple of years, three years now, and he come in, he couldn't have come in at a worse time, because there was a lot of upheaval and a lot of theories and everything going on, so he was right there in the middle of it, and I think he's weathered the storm pretty well, him and the board, I'll put it that way. So, uh, you know, I think we just need to try to move on and get this, move on, and even though the bill, I want to say for the record, a lot of things I didn't understand about the bill, I didn't like about the bill, I called Representative Burchett, explained, voiced my concerns and everything to him, but it's law now, and this is what we're gonna have to comply with.
Well, I'm glad you said it, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Ursula calls, uh, we know, in, in what we do, the state always changing pace, you know, it's not for us to, you know, like it or dislike it, it's just, you know, for our, um, our department, our office to adhere to the rules, whether, whether they are, you know, and so that's what, and that's what we're gonna do. And I, and I take this liberty to speak on behalf of the board, I think we, we, we're, we're ready to get a, a complete board so we can get to work, because we got elections coming up in November, there's training sessions going on, and I, and I want a board that's gonna be willing to jump in there and, and work, and, and help us, uh, you know, help us day to day, especially during the election day, and I think, you know, we're headed in that direction.
Thank you, Carlos. Some of my biggest concerns are people ask me all the time, why we can't get a reading out on our election sooner? They say we're really late on them a lot.
Well, actually.
Looks better than it was.
It used to get them.
Yeah. The other night they had Jacksonville down there, within two hours, they had, they had the mayor. And they look bigger than we are.
Well, I'm, I'm saying, one of the things, one of the, one of the issues we have here is that, um, I don't even know the time, um, the distance, but you got Beckley, which way you got to, so when all the polls close at seven, you know, you know, the, the managers have to take their time to make sure they go through the processes, because you don't want to skip processes, you know, or, or, or leave the, um, information behind, you know, and you got to go back out and get it, so, so, so all the precincts close at seven o'clock, and they took their time to go through and write down their reports, and go through the machines, and write all the stuff that we need to do, um, and everybody left at the same time, remember, Beckley and Haywood's gonna be the latest, you know, they always gonna be a little bit more, you know, Maine and Millwood, you know, a little bit further to go, you know, and I wish we had, you know, everybody in the same area. You know, it would be great if everybody was only two miles away and everybody get their stuff in time. You know, sometimes we're sitting around waiting, you'll say, oh, Beckley's on the way, we just got to wait, you know, but, but we're, but we're still reporting numbers by nine thirty, which is great for us, because I remember, I think all y'all remember, you know, doing the election day, sometimes more than double thirty, twelve o'clock, you know, getting numbers in, you know, but right now, we're, we're consistent about nine thirty, getting all the numbers in, and they're posted on, on the state website and our own website, as soon as they, you know, as soon as we have numbers, we starting to post them, so people are getting real-time numbers, much, much quicker than before, so I think the board is, is, is working with us and
All right.
and helping, thanks.
Thank you, Carlos. All right, we'll go to Jay, discussion item.
Got a hand, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Got a hand.
Mr. Chairman, can I have permission to, uh, address?
Yeah, come up, would you? You're Republican. Excuse me, I apologize.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I'm Deborah Hiddens, I'm the chairman of the Ware County Republican Party. I just wanted to mention, um, a couple of things. Um, first of all, I want to explain that, uh, the Republican Party, uh, has submitted, uh, some, um, people for you to consider, and the way we, um, select those people to present to you is that we, um, ask, survey our members if anyone is willing to serve, interested in serving. They fill out a form, a recommendation form, and you have a copy of that in your material. The county committee meets. The county committee is composed of the Ware County Republican Party officers, as well as the precinct chairman. And this group is the administrative group of the Republican Party in between conventions. On June the fifth, the Ware County, uh, Republican County Committee met. We have five, uh, individuals who had submitted their recommendation form. We reviewed that information, and the county committee voted to submit three names to you. Uh, and you have those recommendation forms in front of you. Um, because we feel like that these individuals, um, have great experience. One is a poll watcher, now a poll worker and a poll manager. Another one is a person who has extensive, um, business experience and, uh, community service experience. The other individual is one who has been a poll worker and watcher uh, for several election cycles previously, and is actually, um, a candidate for office. So we feel like those people we have presented to you for your consideration are experienced and very well qualified. Um, so I also want to say that, um, you know, in Ware County, Ware County with, um, seventy percent Republican voters, thirty percent Democrat. Um, currently, there are, um, let's see, one Democrat that's serving on the board, and, uh, three Republicans. And if you appointed one of our nominees, then there would be four Republicans and one Democrat. And if you chose to appoint another Democrat, then Republicans would have a three to two, uh, majority. Um, previously, when Mr. Nelson was appointed, um, he, um, he is a Democrat, and he was appointed as supervisor of elections. Our party has worked very well with Mr. Nelson. Um, but, um, we are a majority Republican county, and I would ask you to please consider that fact in your, um, choice of an appointee to the Board of Elections. Um, let's see my notes. The other thing that I want to mention regarding the new law that says that, um, well, previously, the law was that Republic, the Republican Party could appoint two people to the Board, Board of Elections. The Democrat Party could appoint two. Those four individuals were together, and they selected a fifth member who would be the chairman. They could not make a decision, then that, the decision for appointing the chairman of the Board of Elections went to the chief superior court judge. Uh, so the last two, uh, before Mr. Bartlett being elected chairman recently, then those two chairmen appointed by the judge, uh, are Democrats. Um.
I'm sorry, our five minutes are up.
I'm sorry, I didn't know if I was being timed.
It's, it's five minutes, five minutes.
Um. Thank you, but the Democrats and the Republicans, I really would like to say this, on the law are considered private entities, but these two parties have primaries, and we are written into the law, the election law, that we participate by electing candidates through a primary. Uh, we do poll watchers, so we are involved, I, I, I don't consider us really a private organization, but that's what the law says, so I'm just telling you my opinion about that. But, uh, I think that, um, the two Republic, the Democrats and Republicans, the two major parties are very much involved in the entire election process. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything on that? Okay, that's, uh, make that one go on. Okay. Discussion on the item of the Georgia State Patrol Post twenty-two. And I'm gonna ask Timmy if he would, he don't bring it up, he knows what we, shall be about.
Yes, sir, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. County Manager, Madam Attorney, Madam Clerk. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm the one that brought it up to the commission, uh, for Post twenty-two, Georgia State Patrol, even though I didn't retire from State Patrol, I retired from the city of Wake Forest. These are the, the big guys at the top of the, the run, is what I call it. But, uh, their post out there was built, I believe in sixty-four, sixty-five is when that building was built. I know that, because I used to go out here and sit on my Uncle Sidney's lap, and he was, uh, what we called the one-hour bandit out there when he run, uh, radio dispatch out there, so I spent many a day out there at GSP, and, uh, it, it's, it's where my, my, it's in my blood, being in law enforcement, I've done it for a long, long time, done it for many years, had the pleasure of working with both these gentlemen here that are State Patrol now, and, uh, was actually partially trained by Mr. Meeks back here.
Poor child.
Yeah, exactly, and, uh, and Sergeant Cooper, I had the honor of working with him several years at Wake Forest, and then he went to the county and then worked his way up to GSP. Uh, but it is, I've, I've always said I bleed blue forever. I have went and looked at state law and read state law, so that's kind of like the counties, it's up to us, uh, because that building, you know, is in our county, and, uh, talked it over with the county manager, and he said it'd be okay to bring it to y'all. Uh, and I have spoken with a couple of y'all, me and the chairman actually went out there and looked at the conditions of the building, and, uh, like, for example, just like Mr. Littlejohn was talking about when it rains a little bit, and that road impassable, where when it rains a, a little bit, you know, we got a good heavy rain here, if you ride out here to GSP, you'll notice that their ditch in front of their building is the only ditch that water stays in for days, if not weeks, after a heavy rain. All the other ditches dry up and go away. Uh, they're also, they happen to be the last building in the county that's on the main water main and the sewage line, so anytime we have a heavy rain, that water backs up in their building. And that's also something that we have to pay for, whenever they get A-one or another cleaning company out there to go clean them up, that's a building I believe we received. Uh, if, I would be in favor of either that the commission wanted to do, build a new building, or it was brought up to me by a couple of, the troopers, uh, one lieutenant in particular, the old conservative services building uh, down, I believe it's at the end of Darling, if I got that right, I believe it's at the end of Darling. But that building has been closed now for six, eight years, uh, but conservative service has worked out of it for a long time, it's already standing, it's got a, whole parking lots paved, and in the lieutenant's opinion, uh, that would be the best shot, the best place for them to be. Uh, I do know, I have been in talks, uh, there is other counties that are eyeing the GSP, Georgia State Patrol, to get them in their county, and once another county jumps on board and they start the process, if we hadn't started our process, we're alleviated, and then we lose our troopers to another county. And I don't want that to happen. I want to keep GSP here in Ware County, whatever it takes for us to keep them here, I want to be able to keep them here. Uh, and from where I'm sitting, I believe we owe it to them. I mean, they do, they do walk that line that I chose to retire from still, and they gonna be walking it for many more years to protect y'all, just like our Ware County Sheriff's Department, just like our city does. I mean, these guys do a fine job, I know there was many of them, I was glad to turn around and see that light blue shirt when I was out there in the situation. Just like there was many times I was glad to see that tan shirt, just like there's times that we backed up GSP whenever they pitted somebody, and, uh, they were glad to see our dark blue pull up with them. So we all kind of intertwine and work together, this is where my heart is, y'all, y'all know that, first responders all the way, I'll say it that many times. Uh, I would just like y'all to ponder on it, think about it, and let's come back together as a. as a commission and talk real serious about not losing them to another county. I don't want that to happen.
Commissioner Lucas, as you remember, previous sales tax that did not pass had a new State Patrol, I always call it barracks, my daddy was head of the GBI and the State Patrol in the Carter administration and I always remember his, Wake Cross State Patrol barracks was where the Alcohol Anonymous building is on Lee Avenue and my mom and daddy lived in the apartment house where the library is and he would walk to work to the State Patrol barracks. So, growing up with all of that, I was very disappointed that the sales tax didn't pass and one of the main reasons I was upset that we couldn't build a new State Patrol post. I personally, Mr. Chairman, I just throw it out, Timmy's throwing stuff out. Could you or appoint a couple of commissioners and an engineer and manager to look at the whole situation and come back with some recommendations on what we can do?
Yeah. I went out there and looked at that building myself and it needs some renovation, it needs done to it.
There's been very little money spent by the county on that building.
It's rundown, it is. Now, the building that we, he mentioned.
The old conservative services building?
The old conservative services. Did we own that building?
No, it's a Mr. Polk, I looked it up.
Who owns it?
It's a Mr. Polk, I can't remember his first name.
Nonprofit organization.
Other words, we'd have to buy it in, but we used to.
Yeah. I think we could get the building cheaper than, we could renovate that one for.
I think Ronald Polk and Bill Higginson owns that building.
I know it's a Polk fellow.
Higginson and Polk. I mean, let that be in the recommendations that Brandon and Scott and two commissioners come up with.
Let's do that in, appoint two commissioners to work on it and then come back.
I got one question, does the county do the upkeep on that building? I mean, if they got store problem, did the county pay for that building, did the state pay for it?
Right. We haven't, that I'm aware of since I've been.
I've never been aware of the county having paid it.
I do know in the nineties, we did some work out there, county did, through, I think, the prison construction crew.
They did.
They did.
They separated the license examiners.
Ninety-four, ninety-five, I think.
At this time, I mean, I'm a hundred percent in agreement to do whatever for county.
Did the state do that out there then, the county didn't do that, they didn't put that building out?
County built it.
The county built it.
The state keeps the upkeep on it.
Okay.
And it's actually, if I'm not mistaken, it's still in state law, that's the way it is to be. If a post is in that county, that county is responsible for furnishing the building.
Usually the counties build a post in order to have the troopers stationed in the counties.
And that's the reason I'm wanting to jump on this right now because I do know that there are some other counties interested and once, like I say, y'all, I'm telling you, once that building's done, they're gonna be locked in at another county and then that's another pocket of revenue that we're gonna lose that we could keep here.
We want all the law enforcement we can get.
Absolutely. And that'll also help bring industry in because I've looked, look at Coffee County, for example, when that post got built there. When Coffee County, when that, when that post got built there, I mean, look at Coffee, they're busting at the seams, they got a Publix now, y'all, I mean, come on.
But Weir County collects more sale tax than Coffee County does, eh?
Yeah, we do. But I mean, they're, I mean, but they're busting at the seams.
So, let me ask this, Timmy, you know, I've called you and we've had several conversations about it and about State Patrol building. So with the building aside, now the county owns that building?
Yep. Yep. We own the building.
So if the county went there and razed that building to put another building in that spot, then we wouldn't have to buy land or anything like that, or do you think it's the, I mean, you talk about the drainage, is that something that can be?
That can be correct.
That can be correct. So, and I always thought that, you know, and maybe that's because I just don't have a, I have a limited knowledge about where posts tend to locate, but I thought it would be like on a major thoroughfare, you know, major highway, rather than being inside because, you know, when you mentioned about the conservative service building, I said, well, that's kind of off the beaten path, you know? And so, like I said, I'm learning about this and as far as the recommendation, I think Commissioner Polk made a good recommendation about having someone and I think, Timmy, you with the law enforcement background and everything and Steve, you know, I think y'all would be to a good fit for something like that because I don't really have a lot of knowledge. My son was a police officer, but other than that, that's about my extent of being in law enforcement.
You'd be all right with that, Commissioner?
All right.
What do you think, Mr. Brandon? We'll be in contact. Thanks, sir.
Okay. We'll appoint him, Bart and Lucas.
With Mr. Brandon?
And Mr. Brandon. Okay. All right, let's do the county manager report.
I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Permission comment?
Hello.
Okay, we're gonna, we'll take a recess, what, twenty minutes?
About twenty.
Five thirty? We'll go to five thirty?
We start at five.
Five.
Fifteen, fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes? Let's take fifteen minutes. Okay, we'll start back at five fifteen.
Five fifteen.
Here, folks.
Make motion.
Make motion.
Say, yeah, we got it.
About our name. Take that, John. Seven thirty. Oh.
This guy, regular meeting, Monday, June the 12th at five, well, it's five nineteen.
It's gone.
Okay? It's gone. We got to get to a legislature leaders and I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda that's set forth in front of us.
I hear a second.
Second?
Got a motion and a second on the agenda. Let's vote on it. Let's see. Mr. Burson.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Barnard.
Aye.
Chair of the, okay. The guest speaker is on, Senator Adams. Approve the minutes for May of twenty twenty-three. The work session, May the eighth. The public hearing on May the eighth, the regular meeting on May the eighth. I hear a motion.
Chairman, I'm often hoping that we approve the work session minutes, May the eighth, public hearing, May the eighth, and the regular meeting of May the eighth.
There you go. I just got a second.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second, okay? You're going to approve it then. Mr. Burson.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Barnard.
Aye.
Chair of the, all right, now, agenda items. The resolution for the twenty twenty-three dash seventeen, accept the Georgia DOT contract for the airport terminal apron rehabilitation. Okay? Uh.
I make a motion, we accept the resolution twenty twenty-three seventeen, uh, as wrote out by Georgia Department of Transportation contract for the airport terminal apron rehab. The way that Mr. Barnard explained it earlier, taking the money out of the two separate funds.
And this is just to accept the contract, okay? Got a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. Mr. Burson.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Barnard.
Aye.
Chair of the, all right. Now, this is be the resolution for twenty twenty-three dash eighteen, award the bid for airport terminal apron rehabilitation, phase one and two. We want to take both of them, let's go ahead with them and do them both.
Mr. Chairman.
Motion to.
I'm making motion that we do phase one and phase two, a hundred eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred ten dollars to five cent, local twenty-five percent will come out of, uh, ARCA fund. And the bid for phase two, the hundred one ten seven twenty-eight twenty-five, come out of airport fund.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second. All right. Mr. Burson.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Barnard.
Aye.
Chair of the, okay. Now, the, uh, the resolution for twenty twenty-three dash nineteen, award the bid for the Bickley Community Tennis Court Rehabilitation. Okay?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend we take the bid that's been presented to us for the tennis court rehab in Bickley.
I'll second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Let's bill them. Mr. Burson.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Barnard.
Aye.
Chair of the, okay. Now, the resolution for twenty twenty-three dash twenty, approve the regional T-SPLS project list. I hear a motion to approve that list as it is.
Chair, I move we adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty, the furnished list for the T-SPLS program coming up.
Okay. Got a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Let's vote on it. Mr. Burson.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Barnard.
Aye.
Chair of the, all right. Now, this E, the resolution for twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one, approve the unison behavioral health contract. And that's the, I don't have that here, motion to approve it.
Make a motion. Let Mr. Pope have it.
Okay. You made a motion to approve.
Mr. Pope made a motion, I'll second it.
Okay, got a motion and a second. All right. Mr. Burson.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Barnard.
Aye.
All right. You got that. Let's go to F, the ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh-one, amend chapter six alcoholic beverage license requirement. Okay, that's just to amend their license, whatever.
I move that we accept as presented by Chief Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh-three, amend chapter six alcoholic beverages license requirements.
Okay. Got a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Okay, let's go to it. Mr. Burson.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Barnard.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, now, G, alcohol license application for nineteen eighty-four South Georgia Parkway. Do I have a motion that we accept her application or his application?
I'm over approval, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
Okay, we got approval on that. All right, let's, and put a second, let's vote on it. Mr. Burson.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Barnard.
No.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize, the clerk is having a difficult time, and I am also hearing your vote, if you don't mind, on the last two, I believe you voted in the affirmative, and on this one.
I voted yes.
Okay, thank you.
And on the license, I voted yes.
Great, thank you, sir.
Mr. Barnard voted no.
Thank you.
On the alcohol license application, this is H, alcohol license application for twenty-four seventy-six Minnesota Avenue. I hear a motion for approval on that one.
So I move, I, I move that we accept alcohol license application, uh, for the residence or location at twenty-four seventy-six Minnesota Avenue.
Okay, you got a second?
Second.
I like second, okay. Let's vote on it. Mr. Burson.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Mr. Lucas.
Aye.
Mr. Barnard.
No.
Chair of the, yeah. Okay. Now, I, appointment of the Work County Board of Elections, please three. It's kind of hard to figure out now, we got, what, seven heads, seven names? We got some applications, and some Democrat, Republican. What I'm gonna do is I'm just gonna ask for somebody to make a motion for one of the nominee to be appointed.
I'd like to make a, uh, nom- uh, nomination, Mr. Chairman, I would like to preface it by saying that, again, uh, my desire was whenever we got into this to lead the board, just like it was the board in tag, I thought it had a good board. Everyone was working well, and, uh, but evidently that didn't make it through. And I also tried to, uh, again, get the board member that was on there that was voted off, you know, to be considered back on the board, and, uh, just a feeling in the, uh, feedback was that we, well, let me back up. First of all, want to try to see if we could balance the board off a little bit better than what it is right now, it's three Republican, one Democrat. So with that being said, it was agreed upon, hey, not agreed upon, but it was discussed about maybe trying to balance the board off. And at this time, we're at this point now, at this juncture where we have to put someone on the board. My first choice was, again, the previous board member that was on there, Mrs. Taylor, and we also got a letter recommending four people, and she was included on that list. However, the, uh, state Democratic Party sent a letter sometime this afternoon, I guess I haven't even seen it, so my email, but we got a copy over here for the other two people that was on there. So, and talking and trying to figure out, you know, the best person to be on the board, again, going back to Ms. Taylor, but right now, the feeling is that Ms. Mayor Solomon Gaines is the one that they feel like can work on the board and, you know, would be a good fit for the board. So my main thing is to keep the board more balanced than what it is right now. And so, uh, if that's what it's gonna take, then that's what, you know, my recommendation they're gonna be at this time, but that's not my first choice.
Okay, who, which one now, this?
Mary Solomon Gaines.
That's over here for it, first of all.
Well, no, that wasn't my first choice, but, you know, Ms. Taylor, she was, uh, on the board, and like I said, I don't really know her that well, but the only thing I knew, she was on that board, and she was serving on it, and the board was working well, but then commissioners felt like, hey, we need someone else, you know, on there, so she was voted off. So right now, Ms. Mary Solomon Gaines.
Okay.
Is that your marshal?
Yeah.
Well, he said he just wanted to bring up a name, I guess, to kind of talk about it.
Okay, we got some resumes on, on these, I guess, the Work County Republican Party. Michael Douglas. He's, uh, he's been a candidate for city council. And, uh.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may. Are you wanting to go and get a motion on the floor right now for someone for that post?
Let's talk about them a little bit on the Democrat and Republican, just give them all a fair shake at it, and then we'll see. And then I'll ask for this denomination, that, that be okay?
That'd be fine, man.
All right, y'all.
Bottom would choose one Democrat, one Republican to hash it out over, then we'll take a vote, whoever won.
I thought about that same thing, picking two, and then, uh, if we vote on one, if he gets it, then the other one just, you know, we'll have two names. Y'all wanna do that?
Mr. Attorney, does that sound, does that sound logical? Just have one from each party and then?
Well, I would say, I mean, I think the time for discussion was at the work session, but we certainly can continue that discussion now if you all would like. Um, procedurally, what probably makes the most sense is to have a motion, um, to, I mean, we're looking for one appointment to this post, post three. Okay, so, um, I mean, certainly if you all would like discussion as far as the pros and cons of the general categories of Democrat and Republican, but ultimately, it will be, you know, one person appointed, um, no matter what category they do happen to fall in, so, I mean, procedurally, we are ready for a motion, if you all are ready to make the motion, if you feel like there needs to be further discussion prior to the motion being made, certainly can have that also.
And that's why I asked the question, do we, where you want to go and just make a motion now, and then when we get into the discussion phase, I guess we could discuss it, but right now, to go and make a motion, you know, for the appointment to post number three.
Okay. Let's, let's, let's do that then, let's just make a motion, and if they don't get the five vote, or if they don't get the majority, then we pick another one.
Okay, well, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion at this time for post number three for Mrs. Mary Solomon Gaines to fill that spot on the election board.
Okay, you have a second on that? We have a second. Okay, you don't have a second.
I'll second it for a matter of discussion.
Second it for discussion.
Get it on the table and discuss it.
Okay, any discussion?
I personally think there should be a, um, Democrat appointed, um, that would give balance to the board, in my opinion.
I, I concur with that one hundred and ten percent.
If we do pick a Democrat, Republican, party still gonna have a majority with the chairman.
Exactly.
Yeah. Okay.
That's my sentiments as well.
Call a vote on it.
We need to, we, we need to call it to a vote now?
We've got a motion and a second, so we'll call the vote.
He voted for a second for the discussion, okay. We got a motion and a second, Mary Solomon Gaines. All right. Let's vote on it. Mr. Burson.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Mr. Burson, Mr. Lucas. Lucas.
No.
No? Mr. Barnard?
Aye.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, was that affirmative vote for you?
Chair vote no.
No, okay, thank you.
Three, four, two, okay. Okay. County managers report.
Uh, I don't have anything, does, I, I had to clarify something I thought I could mention, but, uh, they asked me to hold off, it's, uh, it's something that's being planned, and, uh, I'll mention it at the next meeting.
Okay. All right, you got any to make from this time?
I've got a couple. First one is the Winkley Bridge out in Jamestown, after we had our last meeting the other day, I got concerned about what we brought up about the dog leg in it. So I went out there and, uh, we got branded everything. What we plan to do is extend the guardrails another hundred foot on both sides, but on the north side, that will keep somebody from running off the thing, and it will look good if we get through with it. And they said there's enough funds in it to, uh, take care of that.
How come we can't move that force main in that, uh, case?
AT and T, AT and T probably charges out, you know what, move it.
I doubt it.
But it's already built now.
That should've been planned out ahead of time.
I agree with you. Next time, just need to be very planned.
They asked for a change order to do it.
Yeah. Branded.
Bring that up when the change order gets here, aye?
You go ahead and do a change order on the guardrails?
You don't give them a change order, contract, you don't change it.
You have a payout for guardrail setup in the contract, so we, we have units and, Mr. Chairman, we have a payout set up for guardrail in the contract, so all we'd be would be extending that and increasing that payout. So it was already bid on the part of the contract, so if we wanted to extend that guardrail, we would just increase the linear footage for that payout to cover that additional cost.
So you go ahead and do a change order?
No, sir, just, just additional units to that payout.
Let me ask something, how, how come that, is it because of that cable and that force main?
The cable, AT and T had it existing. The cable, AT and T had an existing easement in place, and they said they were, they were there. The requirement that they had to allow us to construct on their right of way, or existed easement, was for that paved road to be off of that line that was already there. So in other words, they're allowing us to build on their existing easement, uh, for us to stay off of their line that's still in use. Where that was their requirement to grant us permission to build on their right of way.
Hey, that would live with that dog leg and that road like that, that's pretty bad crew. If, what would it cost us to straighten that road before they ever paved it?
We'd have to go to AT and T, go back to AT and T and find out.
Did they try that beforehand?
Sir?
Did they try that beforehand?
No, they had an existing right of way there.
I know.
Their stipulation on us using their right of way was to fill the roadway off of their line. So they're, they allowed, it was never requested to move their line or to get a cost involved with that, because that was their requirement on allowing us to build on their existing, uh, easement that they had there.
I've moved their line before, I moved one up in Macon, Georgia, I moved one down on Saint Sound Line, a big line. It could be done.
That, that.
I know they will let you.
Brandon, would it be, is, is it feasible to move the northern part of that road all the, all the way over into where that pond is now? Would that straighten it? I'm trying to remember how that's laid out.
To stay straight, as the existing line that goes, you have to fill in a significant portion of Mr. Rainwater's pond.
To straighten it all out, without having to go and move lines?
And I think it would, mine would fridge on the house he has there as well.
Okay.
If you would go straight up and not turn and get back over the line to the property line, which is what, what we did. We came down the property line as much as we could, and then we got right up to the line with Wing Clay on the other side of the tree.
I believe once they get the shoulder finished, and the guardrails up, I mean, it's not gonna be all, it's not gonna be like that right there, it's gonna be kind of like this.
Yes.
It's supposed to be a slow speed anyway.
Right, twenty-five miles an hour, I mean, somebody rests at a hundred mile an hour, they deserve what they get.
Already in traffic, you know. Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay, any more commission comment?
Yes, Chairman, I'd just like to say, uh, Juneteenth will be, I believe it's on the nineteenth, uh, which would be, what, next Monday, Monday after next?
Next week.
And, uh, have, I think, a couple of celebrations, uh, planned, one in, uh, at, I think it's at Baylor Street Park, I believe, and the other one's on Oak Street. And, uh, I understand it's a great event planned for both of those, uh, venues, so, uh, have a chance, come out and see and enjoy it. And also, want to thank Ms. Taylor for her service on the election board, and, uh, you know, it's just unfortunate, again, I'm hoping through saying this about this possible four twenty-two, that this is something that was kind of thrust on us, that, like I say, I already voiced my concerns and my feelings about it to the state representative, and, uh, I think it could've been done a little bit differently than what it was, but however, we have, it's the law now, we have to live with it, and I hope that this new board that's in place right now can work for the best interest of the citizens of Waycross, and I believe it will, and again, Ms. Taylor, thanks for your service on the board.
Okay.
I got one other thing, what did we come up with on swimming pool, is it open, is it closed, or what?
They, they ordered the chemicals, and they're looking at having it open in the next few days.
Good.
Okay, they was able to get lifeguards hired in time and everything?
As far as we know, I haven't heard back from the wild since last, end of last week, but I could find the status of that and let y'all know.
And we still, Mr. County Manager, we still gonna foot the bill for the security?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then take it away from what we talked about at the last meeting?
Our work, maybe.
Yeah, unless they can come up with, you know, the money.
Right.
For it, but I think it's, would be a travesty if we allowed that pool to sit there, and we got everything in place and get right up here to the door, and deprive the kids, you know, of that opportunity to be able to use the pool, and, uh, it's something, because kids need an outlet, and I think this would be a great outlet for them in, uh, learning swimming lessons, or whatever it may be. And so, uh, I've been in constant contact with Scott, the manager also, with the rec director, to make sure we stay on top of this and don't let the time slip by, because right now, we into the second week of June, so we've basically deprived them of, of two weeks.
Two weeks.
Being in that pool, so I hope by this time next week, the kids can be out there swimming, and the adults, you know, adults want to come out there, but, uh, I think we need to kind of stay right on top of this.
I agree with you.
Any more? How is the, uh, bridge coming on Albany Avenue, everything?
Uh, as far, they're supposed to be going out, I think, um, this week to, uh, do more, um, survey outside the right of way.
Okay.
So, I think he's supposed to let me know tomorrow, and then we'll try to start, I think, Wednesday through the rest of the week, and then probably, at least another couple of weeks.
It won't be long, then we'll be acquiring the right of way.
At what point will we be able to look at the plans?
It'll be, it'll be further on down the road, I mean, they just now doing the survey, so, I'm sure they'll get some, um, supplement, supplementary, uh, design done within the next, uh, five, six months, I would imagine.
What about O.C. Davis U.S. One? I get called by two business owners at least twice a week, asking about acquisition of their property.
I'll, I'll find out, we have a, uh, a status meeting that we listen in on with DOT tomorrow afternoon at three.
Okay.
So I should, but we should know more by then.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, any more? No, I hear a motion to adjourn.
So, move, Mr. Chair.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Please adjourn.
Mark.